At 7:00 PM, if you will kindly stand, join me for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. May be seated. Oh, here it is, here it is. All right, our next item is a public comment. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by the city council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the city council. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes. Our first presenter is Emily Rogers. Any relation to Mr. Rogers?
Which one?
Which one?
I'm Emily Rogers. And I'd like to start by thanking you all who served in the Girl Scouts during Girl Scout season. But tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the Kids Business Fair. This will be the eighth annual Kids Business Fair from way back in 2015 to help young entrepreneurs ages six to eighteen. And maybe this will be the farmer's market on June 11th from three to sixteen.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Don't ask her dad to save her lemonade either because he won't.
All right. I am a proud supporter of every kid who comes to the business fair every year. Terry Lucas.
I'd like to thank you for your consideration for the Flugerville Fire Department to provide our community with experienced and highly skilled and proven paramedics. Experience has shown that our own award-winning fire department, an excellently trained fire department, has and will continue to deliver the life-saving measures our families, friends, and neighbors so richly deserve and depend upon. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Pat McCord.
There goes the neighborhood. Hopefully I can fit this in a time allotted. City manager, mayor, council, staff, good evening. Short story, recently I bought a different house here in Flugerville. I moved exactly three doors west of where I used to live. And the house is an older house and it had an older storage shed in the backyard. A storage shed in the backyard is a place where you keep your mower, your weed eater, your Christmas decorations, that kind of thing. So I submitted a permit for that. And along with that, because I wanted a light bulb in there, I submitted an electrical permit, light switch, bulb, wall socket, that type of thing. The old shed has been demolished. It had power running to it, so there's a pigtail out there sticking up in the yard in a buried conduit that goes to the breaker box. The city permit requires that you have a master electrician sign off on the permit and be present for inspections. I contacted master electrician, we got a price, a plan, submitted the permit, permit went to review, and it came back requesting a single line schematic of the circuit that was going to be installed. This is like asking a PhD in mathematics to calculate your dinner tip. He was somewhat insulted and said he was out. I have contacted since then 11 more master electricians. I get the job's too small, it's not worth my time, I have a $1,500 minimum fee. And so what was interesting about that, that four of the 11, two that actually live in Flugerville, said they no longer do electrical contracting in the city of Flugerville. Good job on bureaucracy. So just an example, 500 minimum fee, $325 permit fee, two hours of permit responsibility at 125 per hour, two hours of inspection and wait time. So the minimum that one electrician is willing to do the job for is 1054. So making it difficult to get this done, I'm still working on how to get it done. The city, I think, should take a look at possibly, when it's not internal residential electrical issues, maybe allowing journeyman electricians to do it. They're the ones that need the money. You know, it's not the master electrician, the journeyman are the ones that are trying to go through training and get their certificate. So I think I would like the city to look at that. One of the master electricians told me technically by the code that the city of Flugerville runs by right now, if you needed to change out a wall socket, or a light switch, or a ceiling fan, that you're violating the code if you do it yourself. Just bought a new house, or an old new house, and I can tell you I installed all the ceiling fans myself and changed out many of the light fixtures. So this just is a small thing that makes it difficult for a kind of a citizen like me to get stuff done. I was even told by one electrician, says what you should do is get the shed built, never file the electrical permit, do it yourself, put up a no trespassing sign and a camera, and if the city comes in the backyard to take a look, sue them for trespassing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCord. So is there anybody else wishing to make public comment at this time? Okay. Before I move on to presentations, I would like to take a moment to exercise a privilege here to introduce a celebrity that we have in our myths. This young lady, nine years old, she has earned the title of American Miss National Young Miss 2024, and her name is Eva Badugar. I think she has it down already. Thank you very much, Eva.
Yeah, she popped out real quick.
I have two proclamations. So this evening, I'd like to present, Flugerville accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes that diverse population leads to a vibrant community. We believe our diversity makes us stronger and that by sharing our talents, ideas, and dreams, we all become better people. Flugerville Pride was founded to celebrate the diversity in our community and provide a place for all to gather in safely, in acceptance and love. I proclaim June 2024 as Pride Month in the city of Flugerville, where shall get I? And members of Flugerville Pride are here to accept the proclamation. You'll come forward. Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month creates an opportunity for the communities to learn more about Alzheimer's prevention and services, brain health, and awareness efforts. The city of Flugerville is committed to supporting a strong framework to raise awareness of Alzheimer's and brain health. Flugerville recognizes a need to create a community that provides services and support for persons with Alzheimer's and their caregivers. I proclaim June 2024 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. And the city of Flugerville, Jennifer Scott, Director of Aging Programs with Kepco is here to accept the proclamation.
Good evening. Thank you very much for inviting me tonight. Brain awareness and Alzheimer's disease is a critically important effort for the city of Flugerville. I took the liberty of doing some statistics on the population in Flugerville, and almost 10% of people in Flugerville in 2022 were the age of 65 and above. And how does that extrapolate out to people with Alzheimer's? And about 10% of people aged 65 to 75 get Alzheimer's, 30% from 75 to 85, and almost half of people aged 85 and above will get Alzheimer's disease. So if you extrapolate that out, it's a serious issue that the cities and counties need to take into account. And the population in Flugerville between the ages of 45 and 65 is almost 26%. So those are all people aging all at the same time. So I applaud the city of Flugerville and thank you for having a proclamation, for doing what you can to keep your brain healthy and keeping awareness of people who have Alzheimer's and their family caregivers. The area agency on aging of the capital area provides in-home support services for people. It is not income-based. If you would like some information about that, I'll have some after the meeting. Thank you.
Our next item is reading of the consent agenda. And council, are you wishing to pull any items?
I have no items.
What?
I believe no one is pulling item.
No, 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 quickly, quickly. Oh, you got some?
Trista.
With no items pulled, the consent agenda may be acted upon in a single motion.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
A motion and second to approve the consent agenda.
Ken got a little too excited over there.
And that was unanimous, thank you very much. Item 6A is to conduct a public hearing and consider approving an ordinance on first reading with the caption reading, "An ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending ordinance number 1203-15-02-24." The city of Flugerville, Texas, has amended by changing the zoning designation of 1.6 acre tract of land known as Lot 2A Block E of the amending plat of Block E 685 Commercial Park subdivision from general business zoning district to the urban level zoning district to be known as the 2020205 FM 685 rezoning.
Good evening, mayor and council. So this item again is for property that's just at the southeast corner of 685 and Road Lane. It's the picture that you see there on the screen outlined in red. It's got, currently it has a gas station on it as well as a strip center associated with it. The property is platted, it was established by, we talked about this in history on this now. So again, it was annexed back in the 1996, 97 timeframe. At that point in time, it received an industrial zoning district that we had at that point, and then it went through a replating to be able to establish the configuration that it is today. Then the 130 and 45 corridor was coming through and the property was zoned to the CL4 zoning district, the Corridor Urban Ford. Later, the property owners advocated to make a change on that. That was when they started looking at their existing land uses and looking at maybe the opportunities to further develop in the fashion that they were with the heavier commercial types of zone, heavier kind of commercial land uses. And so they advocated for a rezoning of that property. That's when we created the 685 corridor overlay. I'll show you a picture of what that looks like. But essentially, in the center, it established the gray area, which is the light industrial, and then on the perimeters, the general business two zoning district was applied to those properties that faced out towards 685 and towards Road Lane. The corridor overlay then further defines how design standards would play out inside of that area. Tonight's request is to rezone the property that's directly at that corner of Road Lane and 685 to the Corridor Urban Level Four District. The intent on that is that the property owner today has an existing center. He has a strip center, he has a gas station that's there, has the intent of being able to bring in personal service type land uses into there, also still continuing the operations that he has in place. The zoning district that's in place today does not allow for personal services, and so one of the outlets they could go through is through the zoning change to be able to have that type of, have different kinds of land uses there.
Jeremy, can you, for the public, articulate examples of personal services?
Like a barber shop would be an example, nail salon might be an example, those types of land uses. So as you see on the map, everything that's in color is within the city limits. To the south is the Falcon Point Plan Unit Development that has its own regulations associated with it. Further to the north, we had parcels that proposed zoning changes not too long ago to kind of coincide with the types of land uses that they were interested in. One was an office complex that's looking to move into this area. Further to the north was a self-storage facility that was in existence and was looking to continue their operations. So when looking at the Corridor Urban Level Four District, or we were looking at our Aspire Plan, at the comprehensive plan, making sure that that was consistent, looking at the mixed use, and found that that was consistent there. Again, the Urban Level Four District fits at more of the things that we've talked about recently, about making the changes and setting it up so that properties can evolve and be able to have on, have uses that cater towards a mixed use type of environment. The general business two district, the existing zoning allows for heavier commercial kinds of land uses. That's not what's on this particular property today. So again, it's consistent with the Aspire Plan, the opportunity to be able to bring in additional businesses that go into small tenant spaces, makes sense for that type of land use. And then as we start to look at the future, as things may progress within that corridor, especially along 685, we felt like the CL4 zoning district made sense. Planning and zoning commission also recommended approval earlier this month. There was four, yeah, it was unanimous, but there was four in attendance, so four to zero.
Mr. Fazell, could you tell me this, you mentioned this is currently in, included in an overlay district as well. Do any of the regulations related to the overlay district persist following a zoning change?
Yeah, so the proposed zoning is to change the base zoning. So we had inside of the overlay, we have a general business two and light industrial are both identified as those uses in there in that overlay. The overlay would stay, the regular 685 commercial overlay would still be in place. Should something evolve and one of the regulations that are in place there today need to be, if they were applicable, if there was a permitted use in the CL4 zoning and that those district regulations applied, then those, that overlay would still apply. So an example of that would be a gymnastics facility, as an example. They would be able to design and develop underneath the standards that are in place today, which was to not require all of the masonry, which we cannot regulate today anyway.
Of course I asked for that.
And that was at a time where we did have regulations that applied.
No, 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 we get it.
Yep.
Is that it?
That is.
Okay. Council, any other question? Okay. Is there anybody else wishing to speak on this from the public? A motion and second to close the public hearing. Are you stuck over?
He's so upset, he's thinking about his idea that hard.
Motion carried. Have a motion and second to approve the ordinance.
There we go, look at you, look at you.
It's why your mayor protest.
Motion carried, thank you very much.
Did he blow on it like a cart rich in the head?
Yeah, he did.
Our next item is 6B, conduct a public hearing and consider approving an annexation ordinance on first reading with the caption, "An ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, annexing for full purposes tracts of land totaling approximately 150.180 acres of land lying within the William Caldwell survey, abstract number 162, survey number 66, and being all of a 40.001 acre tract of land described as deed 7C Cameron LLC, recorded in the document number 2022057890, Official Public Records of Travis County, Texas, generally located at 16544 Cameron Road, extending agricultural and development reserve to be known as 16544 Cameron Road Annexation, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, approving a service plan, providing for severability and providing for an effective date."
Mayor and council, this is again for a piece of property that's approximately northwest corner of Cameron Road and Fox Grove Road intersection. It's the property that's bound in the red on the screen there. To the north is contiguous to 1849 Park. This has also frontage along Cameron Road on both the south as well as the east sides. The proposed request is a petition for annexation to be able to bring this property into the city limits. This is on our eastern extent of area as part of our eastern extent of, close to our city limits. And so it becomes a gateway into our neighbor, into our community at this particular location. There's a developer that's interested in pursuing development there. They've looked at our comprehensive plan, the Aspire Plan, identify that identifies for a traditional neighborhood. They're working with us in parallel to this annexation request on a rezoning request. And if approved, then the annexation and the zoning would coincide, and so our second readings would fall at the same time. So that if the zoning does not approve, then the annexation would go away. If the zones are approved, the annexation remains. This is something that is a little new, we haven't done this in the past, but we're working with the developers to be able to get to a situation where we can have city regulations on this particular property and be able to have it developed in conformance with the Aspire Plan. Staff does recommend approval on this particular request, and as I mentioned, the zoning will be coming forward in the next couple of months, in the next couple meetings.
Does it pick up a default zoning?
It would be to the agriculture zoning district is what this would do, and then our zoning case would be from the ag zoning to the other zoning districts.
Would they have to rezon the entire thing? I mean, it's agricultural, so the entire piece of property would be rezoned to whatever was applicable?
That is their request, so that they can go through the zoning process and be able to have the different entitlements in place. And those would be, that will be a separate case that will be bringing.
Right, I understand.
But is it going to be contemporaneous?
Yes.
I think that's a great idea. I think I've argued for that in the past, and I'm excited that you found a way to make that work where we can get the zoning and the annexation happening all at the same time.
Yeah, I was about to ask you, we've had that conversation before, and you said, you know, it's new for y'all, but what was the impetus to do it with this one?
Their interest in doing, pursuing the annexation, we had many conversations with them about the types of development that could go there. We've had conversations with prior developers that were also interested in doing something else. This group is interested in complying with the Aspire Plan, and so we were trying to find a method that we could reach them.
They work with you, you work with them.
That's correct, and legal helped us find that way.
Oh, wait.
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, having none. Motion to close public hearing. Have a motion and second to close the public hearing. And motion carried.
Motion to approve 6B is presented.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve 6B. And motion carried again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is 7A, discuss and consider action regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funding allocation. Tracy.
Good evening, mayor and council. So the city was awarded $6.1 million from the American Rescue Plan Act, and so far, city council has allocated 5.7 million of that with 370 million unallocated. So tonight, we're bringing an update on where we are with the allocated projects. Some of these projects have seen savings and some of them have exceeded the allocated amount. The deadline for encumbering these funds within this program is December 31st, 2024. And so that's why we're looking at these projects.
Encumbrance, December 31st, 2024, but spent by 2026, correct?
Right, so we have to have them committed.
Yeah.
And so we are looking at where we stand with these projects. So this is an updated allocation of, like I said, some of them have gone over, but some of them have seen savings. We're bringing you a recommendation for the unallocated funds. There are two projects, the Traffic Signal Preemption, which this is a program that overrides the signal priority and will terminate an intended green light in favor of the green light for vehicles requesting preemption. The quote we have is about $750,000. And then at the Willbarger Creek Park, the Parks Department has indicated that these shades over the turf mounted areas would be helpful.
Shane is asking for more money. Are they soccer fields?
It's using the unallocated funds from here. So these are projects, and as, basically with the adjustments of the initial allocated projects, oops, this is what the 6.1 million would look like, all allocated.
Hey, you see football getting to the slides and I'll just point it out. They're expanding the park here.
Quick question for you on the $750,000 for the traffic signal preemption. Is that outfitting the traffic signals or only the patrol vehicles? It seems like an awful lot for 80 vehicles.
I don't personally know about the project, but there are people in the audience.
Well, I mean, but you're saying it seems like a lot, but.
It's 10 grand a vehicle to do signal preemption.
It's literally allowing for them to flip a switch and change the light. That's kind of a big deal.
But it's, I feel like that technology is more built into the traffic signals than the vehicles.
Yeah, you got something to say about that? Come on up. Is there a smee in the audience?
There's more to it than.
I know, it's not.
Is that how that works?
So it's about 93.80 per vehicle, and that includes the outfitting, installation, and 10-year service for each vehicle, and that's the running, that's about average cost for a vehicle preemption.
Okay, so it is all vehicle based? Okay, so it is all vehicle based, but it's including ten years of maintenance?
Right. And this is GPS based. And some of this is our line of sight. And so since you have different profiles of, you have emergency vehicle, like ambulances and that sort of thing. We also have police vehicles. With the GPS unit, the profile of the vehicle doesn't matter. Whereas if you have line of sight, it could.
Okay.
So that's the difference.
Interesting.
No, thank you for that information.
Who provides the service?
We currently have an agreement with Kenley Horn, who's helping us with our, he's a consultant. And with the new glance system that we went with, with our ATMS, this is a price from them that we already received.
Okay, so these eighty units, those are, those would all be patrol units? And that would be, as the units are out of service and new units put in, they would take those from the old units and put them in the new units? And that's included in the cost?
Yes.
And would this work with ambulances as well as police? Would we, would be covering police units and ambulance units? What about our fire department?
This is just the cost for patrol units, but we are, we are, we have been considering if we did partner up and do like ambulance service and fire. But the cost of the unit would not change based on the vehicle since it is a GPS unit.
So that's why I asked you the question regarding who's the, and my apologies, I didn't ask it well. Who's the manufacturer of this instrument?
Perdon.
Okay. Oh, you're going to say Motorola?
Nope.
They're still in business.
They make all their money off of emergencies.
Okay, any other questions on this, council? Well, not just the project, but the entire ARPA.
I move approval of the.
I was going to ask, do we have an update on how far we've spent through the food fairness grant?
I believe the last time I looked at it was about thirty-four thousand.
And last I remember talking with them, they were projecting that they would spend the entire amount this year?
Yes.
That, okay. Yeah, no, I'm excited about that program.
It does have an end date and a max amount of a hundred thousand.
Right.
Yeah. And you gave an update in the weekly update?
Is it in the weekly or in the back?
Yeah, it's in the weekly. Like, whatever.
Rudy doesn't read the week.
I read it somewhere. I move approval of the updated allocation.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve.
Wait, does this allow Shane to say one hundred percent shade on everything?
Ninety-eight point nine. Have you seen the T-shirt?
No.
Shady as PF. I saw that. You haven't seen that T-shirt? You got to go to the Parks and Rec Department more.
I may own one already.
Just one. Mr. McDonald.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, motion carried. Thank you very much. Our next item is seven B, discuss and consider potential action relating to emergency medical services and potential contract. I have been requested by council for an executive session regarding a legal question on this item. So we're in executive session. Okay, we are back from executive session. Action was taken. So let's move on to seven B, discuss and consider potential action relating to emergency medical services and potential contract. Joseph.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, madam manager, Joseph Chacón, emergency services director. This presentation this evening follows presentations in April and earlier this month regarding the provision of emergency medical services for our city. As we have previously discussed and at the direction of council, we brought two contracts. As we have previously discussed and at the direction of council, we brought two contracts, or excuse me, we brought contracts for two different EMS providers for your review and consideration. The first is an interlocal for ESD two, known as Flugerville Fire, to provide advanced life support ambulance services. The second is represented by two contracts, one for four ambulances and one for five ambulances for Allegiance Mobile Health to provide those services. Prior to discussing the terms of the contract, and the contracts are in your backup, I wanted to highlight the enhancements that have been made to the performance metric reporting. In addition to the previous metrics regarding response times, the contracts before you require the provider to report on measures recommended by the National EMS Quality Alliance. These are the high acuity call types, including hypoglycemia, respiratory issues, stroke patients, patients experiencing heart issues and pain intervention measures taken. These measures will be reported on a monthly basis to provide for ongoing discussion between the city and the provider in an effort to maintain the high standards that our citizens deserve. With regard to the financial terms of the options, ESD two has signed a four-year agreement with an option for two one-year extensions at a cost of 1.9 million dollars for the first year. The ILA does have a provision that includes a 2.5% escalator for each subsequent year after the first year. The terms provide for four dedicated mobile intensive care unit, or MICU, ambulances in the Flugerville city limits, as well as two additional MICU ambulances in the ETJ. Allegiance Mobile Health has signed two contracts, one for four ambulances at an annual cost of 1.3 million dollars, and one for five ambulances at an annual cost of 1.9 million dollars. These ambulances would all be MICU units as well and dedicated in the Flugerville city limits. Those are also four-year agreements with an option for two one-year extensions, and there is no annual escalator built into those. For illustrative purposes, this slide provides the cost analysis and comparison between the cost of the SD ILA and the cost of the allegiance contracts over a six-year period. I'll try to break this down a little bit to have it make a little bit of sense. The first column obviously indicates which year we're talking about, year one through year six. The second is the cumulative total for ESD two. You'll notice that the escalator of 2.5% is built into those calculations. The third column is the cumulative cost for allegiance if the four ambulance solution is selected. The next column is the annual difference between the ESD two ILA and the allegiance four ambulance contract. The following column is cumulative cost for the five ambulance solution with allegiance. And the final column is the price difference between the ESD two ILA and the allegiance five ambulance contract. The cost difference between ESD two and allegiance at four ambulances accumulated over the six years is 4,336,700 dollars. The difference between ESD two and allegiance at five ambulances for that same time period is 736,700 dollars.
Can we go back to that last slide?
Yes, sir.
So year two, the difference is 47.5. I'm looking at the last column. Year three, the difference is 143. Year four, the difference is 289. Year five, the difference is 487 in that year.
No, that's cumulative.
Cumulative.
That's cumulative. That column is cumulative.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand the math here. So ESD two would be charging, no, that's, that is the total up to that point. That's not an annual charge. Okay. All right. I see where we're going. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This slide is just a more visual slide, graph over time to highlight the cost difference between the two providers. By the year 2030, you can see that the difference between the two providers at allegiances lower level of four ambulances is approximately 4.34 million dollars. Given the terms of both agreements, staff recommends council approve a contract with allegiance for four ambulances at an annual cost of 1.3 million dollars.
I'll make that motion.
We're gonna have a discussion first? Or are you gonna make a motion? Because I'd like to have a discussion first.
Yeah.
Put it out there. We can get it started.
Okay. Mr. Weiss made a motion. I'll second the motion for purposes of discussion.
All right.
So we're having a motion and a second for discussion, or for approval of this recommendation.
It's for approval, but we can talk now, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Well, I know, Mr. Newsom, you did want to comment. We have somebody in the public who'd like to make public comment if we could have Terry Newsom come forward.
Okay, this, this is gonna take me about three minutes and 26 seconds. I gotta have a coupon.
That's fine.
Okay. Thirty seconds extra.
You, Mayor?
So just a little over two years ago, 64% of the voters said no to paying ESD two more money for ambulance services. The voters have not rescinded that vote since, and this council is still morally obligated to abide by that why the voters overwhelmingly voted for. I know you're all aware that the Flugerville Residents for Responsible Taxation PAC circulated petition in 2022 to take back the sales tax portion of the ESD two's revenue, which according to the ESD two's own FY '24 budget, counts for 29% of the total revenue. This would help offset the 50% reduction in services that the unelected ESD Commissioners Board decided to take away from Flugerville. Upon receiving this petition, the ESD Commissioners Board refused to do their legally obligated duty to verify that petition and instead spent many hundreds of thousands of Flugerville taxpayer dollars in legal fees trying to suppress the First Amendment right of over 5,752 of the city's residents to petition their government. The Texas Supreme Court ultimately ruled in favor of the citizen petition or stating, and I quote, "We, the court, hold that mandamus relief is an appropriate remedy. Mandamus relief is an extraordinary remedy which we issue only to correct a clear abuse of discretion or the violation of duty imposed by the law where there is no other adequate remedy by law." And they have ordered the ESD two Commissioners Board to immediately validate the petition called for November election. The mere fact that the ESD two Board has abused their positions and violated their duties to the people as the Supreme Court has deemed, and indeed tried their best to deny thousands of Flugerville citizens their constitutional First Amendment rights, should clearly be a red flag to this city council and every Flugerville taxpayer, that this is not a governmental body that can be trusted to have the best interests of Flugerville citizens in their hearts. At this point, thanks to the Texas Supreme Court, there will be a November ballot proposition for the voters to vote on, to return the sales tax money back to the taxpayers, thus allowing the elected council, this elected council, to determine how to use that money, which the voters would then be allowed to actually have the opportunity to approve or disprove of. Given the ballot measure, I believe it is prudent for this council to hold off on reestablishing any EMS ambulance services with the ESD until the voters have their say. If this proposition passes in November and the sales tax money is freed up, I would hope that the city council honors the wishes of the large majority that signed this petition and used the available sales tax money to provide some kind of city-controlled EMS ambulance services. The city would then have the options that they do not have now, possibly a city-run EMS department, possibly vouchers to offset private ambulance services similar to what the PFETCH voucher ride program that now exists does, or they'd have a strong bargaining chip to reestablish ambulance services with the ESD two at no new cost to the citizen, to the taxpayers, like the ESD 17 overlay tax would have incurred, where you or elected officials control the money. Right now, the ESD two possesses all the poker chips. They own the monopoly bank. They already have the tax money, so they don't need to negotiate in the best interest of the citizens, and they have no accountability to the voters. Having control of that sales tax money by you, an elected council, allows you... I simply ask you do the right thing and honor the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newsom. Okay, now we can have discussion, council.
Mayor, I'd like to, we got a contract here from ESD two, and one of the things that stands out for me is item 21.7, which is directly related to Mr. Newsom's presentation. If you look at 21.7, it says that if either of the following occur, the district may terminate this agreement by giving at least 20 days prior written notice to the city. So first off, I'm just discouraged that there's an opportunity to cancel this agreement in 20 days, especially when ESD two has told me that they need themselves 30 days to start up the service. So I would have expected them to give us the same courtesy. But the item that this is dependent upon is item 21.7.2, which says the district is required to either abolish or reduce the rate of the district's sales and use tax because of the petition of qualified voters that Mr. Newsom just mentioned. So the way I read this is that if this petition prevails, and we saw what happened in the election for ESD 17 where the voters came out and it was two to one against adding that new tax. I'm not a predictor of the future, but that's perhaps some sort of indication of what may happen. None of us know for sure. But the specter of change is real. And when you do your little risk quadrant and any sort of thing, you got high risk, low risk, high impact, low impact. I see a high-impact, high-risk quadrant here in terms of if a referendum is successful, then we're giving them the option of canceling this contract, which doesn't even make sense if we're paying 2 million dollars. It seems like that service is paid for and not dependent upon other monies. And so, yeah, that's a hard, hard piece of contract to even swallow.
Mr. McDonald, that is an excellent analysis. Let me make my comment known here, and I've said it before, and I know that there's been a lot of information presented on the cost A versus B, and whether it's 1.3, 1.9, four ambulances, five ambulances, and all the numbers seem to add up in such a way that you would think that logically you could make a good decision. The one factor that we leave out, and this is the one that concerns me the most. First of all, I don't think we can put a value on somebody's life in our city, whether it's 1.3, 1.9, or 6.5 million dollars. I mean, Mr. Chacon, what is your life worth?
It's worth a lot to me.
Is it worth 1.9 million?
I don't know what to tell you, Mayor.
It is. It is. You're just afraid to say it. It would be worth 1.9 million to me if somebody asked me that question. How I would come up with that money, I don't know, but I sure as hell would try. And this is where we're putting our citizens at risk with allegiance. They had a death on their watch, and it was negligence, either failure of training, failure of equipment. They had a death in this city. We can't bring that person back for 1.3, 1.9. It doesn't matter. They're gone. I am concerned, overly concerned, that the services provided by allegiance are subpar. I think ESD two, aside from the politics and the board and their direction and whatever they've decided, we've been told that 1.9 is their final offer, take it or leave it. I think they too aren't thinking about the value of a person's life in this city. At least, that's my impression. I would hope that they are. The functioning staff out on the streets in the city of Flugerville, riding in those red boxes, are qualified to take care of our citizens to the best of their ability. Granted, there's no guarantees they will save everybody's life, but if they save one, that's worth 1.9 million. I'm sure they've saved more than one. I'm almost sure of it. These folks ride on those trucks. They're trained on a regular basis. They're paramedics, they're EMTs, they're supervisors. Their focus is on providing the best quality service to a citizen in distress or in a critical situation. So I personally believe, and I know my fellow council members are probably not going to vote that way, and that's fine. I appreciate that. But we will be making a big mistake voting for allegiance to be the service provider in this city.
You're looking at me. I don't know how to piggyback off of that. No, you echoed a lot of what I was gonna say, Mayor. I'll just say that what I was actually gonna say was that I campaigned on public safety, and I know I've taken a big hit from the public on finances. And when it comes to this, I'm gonna stand with public safety, and the way I see it, we have an A team and a B team, and I'm not, I'm not gonna rely on the B team to come in and save lives. So, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to echo too much because you said it all, but yeah, I'll speak for myself, and I'll say that public safety will always come first over money, and you can't put a price on somebody's life. And that's where I have stood, and that's where I always will stand. I agree with you, Mr. McDonald. I don't like this. I didn't see it before, and I don't like 21.7 one bit. And I want that to be known out there. Anybody who's watching, I don't like it. But you can't put a price on somebody's life, and I will not do it.
So here's my issue. Two years ago, we had had this discussion, and we had a third party evaluate all the services out there, and the third party said the best choice was ESD two in terms of quality of service, yada, yada, yada. When it came down to that joint meeting, and you remember that joint meeting, and we had an email that said one number, and then they sat there and said, "Well, that number's a good number. If you go out and do the billing, and you do the collections, and you can potentially get that back." And we said, "No, we're not in the EMS billing business. We're not gonna do that." And that's what led us into the fork, right? That's what, that's what the divergence in the path was, is that we were asked to do something that we were uncomfortable doing, or felt like we, I don't even know if it was legal for us to do. That aside, here we are two years later. We've got a Supreme Court ruling that says that essentially a governing body took an action, and I remember when they took that action, and I called and said, "What was the insufficient legal reason?" They said, "We don't have to tell you." And it came out when the petition, the writ of mandamus was written, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, but when that was submitted, then it came out that the wording, they didn't like the wording of it, the wording they thought was improper, ill-formed, and there was another reason that they had. I don't remember off the top of my head. But both of them were, I mean, everyone knew what the Supreme Court was gonna rule, because it's silly. So here we are with an organization that came to us a month ago, stood in that dais right there, and presented to us, presented to us a deal, said, "Hey, if you sign this 2 million dollars, and we'll take the IFTs, and any money we collect for IFTs, we'll refund to you, and that could be a million dollars." Remember that? Well, then we find out, we get a legal opinion, and that falls under the federal anti-kickback statute for Medicare collections. You can't do that. So here they were offering something that, given their years of quality experience, they should have known was illegal. they should have known was illegal. So then I sat down, sat down with representatives from EST2 and asked, and said, "Okay, so it's illegal to refund that million dollars, or up to that million dollars? So here's the deal, let's split it. Let's assume you're going to get something that, and we just want you to take $500,000 off the contract, or write me a contract for 1.5, because now you've got skin in the game for that." They had an executive meeting, and what did they do? They removed the IFT language. Now, the reason is because they were afraid of this anti-kickback thing, but it wasn't a refund situation, it was a discount off the top, which you can write as a franchise agreement, which is perfectly legal. And then in talking with the representatives from EST2, "Oh, the million dollars is the optimistic number. We're only projecting $100,000 to a million dollars." And I said, "We'll deduct $100,000 and keep the IFTs." And now with a no-go. So there was some misrepresentation there at some point. The other part of that is to think in terms of, they came to us originally with a one-year contract for $2 million. The other entity had come to us with a four-year contract, 1.3 every year, 1.3, 1.3, 1.3. Well, once we asked EST2 for a multi-year contract, lo and behold, what did we discover? What did we call it, an escalator? 2.5% increase year over year. Why? Same number of ambulances, same number of people on those ambulances. Those people are on call, it doesn't matter if there's two more calls per year, four more calls per year, or whatever, it's the same staffing, but 2.5% escalator, that they would potentially have presented when we were going to renew that one-year contract. So my issue here is that I don't know that I would go into an agreement with an organization that has demonstrably proved itself untrustworthy in terms of statements that they publicly make, that you can go and watch the video and see. It's not me making stuff up, it's not me being unfair, it's looking at what actually happens. Now, to the mayor's point, in terms of, and that's, you know, I've got a news clipping handed to me from one of the EST2 representatives, talking about this death. And it's a horrible thing, and it happens. And there is, I can't go back in time and say, "Well, if EST2 was on that call, this person would have expired." The procedure that was administered, there was some judgment about that procedure, but the question is whether or not any procedure would have saved this person's life. There was other complicated health issues involved there. The issue is, and I'll use a metaphor, because I've thought about this a lot, a lot. If I go out and buy a new set of tires, Pirellis or Goodyear's, or whatever your, Yokohama, whatever your favorite set of tires is, and I'm driving down the road and I get a blowout, a flap, does that mean that all those tires are bad? Or does that mean that one tire was bad? And so I get that there was an incident that happened, that paramedic, that person's no longer on staff at allegiance, they're no longer there. Do I think that it's a fair assessment to say there's an A-team and a B-team in terms of quality service? I do not. I think that there are quality standards, and if you get a paramedic license through one organization or another organization, they don't look to see if you're working for EST2 or if you're working for a private entity. You pass the test, and you get the license. And so you have an issue with quality of the people that are licensed to serve in our city, take that to TDLR, or whoever the licensing entity is. Because they all have the same grade. Okay?
I disagree with you, but I would say that's like saying, everybody who passes the bar, somebody who passes the bar is equivalent to somebody who's been in the law as long as Rudy has been, and knows as much, and they should know as much. No, you're not going to know as much if you're not training every day, constantly. They just said, or the last time, they train quarterly. EST is in their training every day, every scenario. They're out there in the woods, they're out there doing stuff, every scenario. You cannot say they are not the A-team compared to allegiance. And then you had the allegiance representative who had the audacity to stand here and say, "We've only had three complaints," yet he didn't even, come on. That's brazen and so ridiculous, I mean, if he's listening, I mean, that's foolish of you to do that. And, you know, you talk about transparency and truth and honesty, I mean, if he's going to come out here and lie to our faces about that, what else are they lying to us about? I mean, just because they're not telling us, or because we don't hear everything, doesn't mean these things aren't happening. So, you know, you're going around transparency, and you're sticking to numbers, and numbers, and numbers. I'm sticking to lives saved. I'm sticking to the A-team that trains every day, just like the United States military. When you're not doing anything, you're training, if you're not cleaning also, but you're training, you're training, you're training. So you're prepared for that situation that comes up when that training is necessary. They train quarterly. Otherwise, they're sitting in their car, or in their van, doing nothing, and walking around. I've seen them walking around vaping, and on their phone, and everything else. You can't say that there is not a comparison, in my opinion, Mr. McDonald. You can't say that, I mean, in my opinion, there is a comparison.
Mr. McDonald, thank you for comparing my life to a tire.
I did not compare your life to a tire.
Yes, sir, you did. Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion.
In a second.
If I may. Lives matter, and you're absolutely right, quality matters. And licensing matters, and practice matters. And, um, you know, if I could wave a magic wand and pick out of all of the services in central Texas, which one would provide the service? It would be the Austin Travis County EMS, who trains harder than anybody else, and all they do is EMS. They are not firefighters who, oh, they do the paramedic thing on the side. They didn't, you know, Austin Travis County EMS, those are people who want to serve emergency medical services. Firefighters want to put out fires. They also do a fine job with medical service, and many of them are trained paramedics, many of them are trained EMTs. And full disclosure here, my son has applied to both EST2 and Austin Travis County EMS. Uh, he's about to get his paramedic certification. When you are in EMS, and what you do is EMS, that is what you do. You know, I'm not on the inside of the red box, I'm not on the inside of the yellow box, I'm not on the inside of the white box. I don't, I'm not a subject matter expert about those relative abilities of those people. I know that they all have to meet state certification. And I agree with you, Mr. Ruiz, that not all lawyers are equal. And I would dare say that even though Rudy and I have about the same level of experience, there are areas of the law where Mr. Matera would be much, much better equipped than I am. And there might be a few where I'd be a little bit better equipped than he is because of what we practice, what we do on an ongoing basis. I don't think any of us up here can say definitively that the quality of one is better or worse than the other. We know that people have died on the watch of EST2. I personally have talked to a survivor of someone who died under EST2 care, and is terrible, probably unavoidable. People die while they're under emergency care every day, and it's horrible. Something like 96% of all people who have a heart attack do not fully recover, no matter how fast the EMS gets to them, no matter how good they are. That football player who was attended to within seconds on the sidelines of Buffalo Bills game a few years ago is absolutely the complete exception to the rule. Looks like he's making 100% recovery. He was young, healthy, and had immediate attention from very well-trained people, including physicians on the sideline. The job of EMS is to preserve lives, but lives are saved in the hospital. Physicians are the ones who, you know, can bring you back to life or not. You know, sometimes things happen, and people are in the vernacular of EMS people, they're DRT, they're dead right there. And you can get in there, and you can, you know, you can work on that heart, maybe you can get a heartbeat back, but they're not coming back. And it's horrible. So what it comes down to is who can you trust? And I would trust any of the men and women in the yellow boxes, or the red boxes, or the white boxes. What I don't trust is the leadership. And I think that, I think Mr. McDonald has done a very thorough job of talking about why we shouldn't trust the leadership. I think there's more to be said, but I'm going to leave it with what he said about that. And, um, I think you have to, because none of us can know the future. None of us can know what's inside the box, what's inside the brain of the person that we're going to deal with when emergencies happen. You have to think about who you can trust. And I think it's pretty clear. I'm sorry, what's clear? What's clear? Trust. Trust who? Trust, well, we can't trust the leadership of EST2. Okay? All right. This is your last chance, counsel. Ms. Holliday, any comment?
This has kept me up for quite some time. It really has. Um, I was just thinking to myself that city council meetings are not just for us that are sitting here, those that are present. The information that was presented to us just two weeks ago seems to have changed. Mayor, I don't want to put a dollar amount on anyone's life, and not mine either, because I live here as well. However, there are parts of the contract that are concerning for me, and so I just feel like it really needs some more time. However, I know we're out of time. Thank you for allowing me to speak. And I am here to serve our citizens, and I've been listening.
Well, I'd like my citizens to know that I'm adamantly opposed to the contract with allegiance. I call the question. It seems like we don't have any other comment. Tristan. Okay, motion failed.
Mayor, will you entertain a motion?
Please.
Make a motion to approve a contract with EST number two?
I'll second that motion.
Well, now it brings up the discussion about the contract terms. So, I've been flipping through here regarding things I just don't like, you know, over here with that. I am, I'm a little concerned about how the absolutionist viewpoint has pretty much persevered all through in these discussions, like it's one way or the other. We should be, we serve the same citizens. We should be talking, we're talking about our citizens. Consequently, we should be able to work on agreements and come to a conclusion that's beneficial to both parties. We all know very well, given how the constraints are coming regarding our ability to extend our own budgets on issues, that we need to work together in preparation with all our citizens regarding what we're using to go ahead and use our tax funds on. We just can't just throw out money because...
Mr. Matera, let me hold you right there. I've been advised by one of the council members that they voted the wrong way. Legal, what is your position on that?
You could, Mayor, you, of course, are responsible for the body, so if you believe a revote should be necessary based on a statement from a council member, you can certainly do that.
Okay, well, I deny that request. Mr. Mayor, wouldn't a motion to reconsider be appropriate under these circumstances? By, it would have to be made by one of the people who prevailed in the vote.
Would have you, Mr. Attorney? Under parliamentary procedure, that's an accurate statement, if we follow Robert's rules of order.
If we follow Robert's rules.
That's correct.
I believe that's also spelled out in our rules of order.
I believe it, I believe it is.
I think it's in our rules of order.
We've done it before.
If someone wants to make a motion to reconsider.
Yeah, so whoever felt like they made the wrong vote would need to make the motion to reconsider.
I make a motion to reconsider the vote.
Second. Have a motion and second to reconsider the previous vote.
It's in our rules.
Okay, motion carried.
Now go ahead.
Now we would need to...
Now go ahead.
I will remake the original motion.
And just for clarification, that's for the four-year plus two-year extensions?
That is for the staff recommendation of the four ambulance agreement.
Right, but it doesn't say whether it's for one year, or I think the signed contract is four years.
It's for the signed agreement.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We already have a proposal that has been autographed by the provider.
Thank you. Second. All right, motion and second. Okay, motion carried. All right. Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to seven C discussion, consider action regarding membership of the city council legislative subcommittee.
Who brought this item up?
What are we looking at?
Legislative Subcommittee.
Who is on the legislative subcommittee?
Does this consider action regarding membership of the...
I would say...
I think that's David and myself.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
I got to say, I'm really enjoying working with Jim on this so far.
And so I was thinking of Councilman Mater as a third person to this committee to be that welcome.
Would you like to be conscripted to the committee?
I was about to say, I think that's the exact word.
Would you like to be drafted and be on the group?
Whatever help y'all need, y'all doing...I really do think y'all doing good work. Whatever help y'all need, I'm there.
Okay.
That works.
We need to put you there in official capacity with a vote. Caesar, you going to make your motion?
Mayor, will you entertain a motion to Councilman Mater to the Legislative Committee?
Sure.
If I may. I guess if there is a resolution for it, so we can just approve a resolution and just have that in the language.
Was Rudy on the resolution? I thought he was left off the resolution.
I don't know. Rudy just went out about the resolution.
Maybe I just looked at the draft and not the final.
They know I always help, you know? I got y'all's back, you know? Our team, all of us are a team.
I'm going to wait and see if Rudy seconds this motion. I'm not going to second it.
No, it's already... I made the motion.
Oh, okay.
Where'd you get a second from?
I didn't get a second.
You didn't get a second? I'm waiting for Rudy to second.
I thought one of y'all did.
I'm not going to second it. I'm going to wait for Rudy to second.
Yes.
All right. If Rudy seconds the motion, then that tells me everything I need to know.
Yeah.
We should vote against him.
We should vote against him.
I do want to be voted for.
I'm just laughing about how Caesar brought that up.
I think now we should make him chairman of the committee.
All right. Moving on to seven D, discuss, consider action regarding the future structure of Flugerville Community Development Corporation and the recruitment of executive directors.
Who brought this? I thought we already talked about it.
We did. And there have been some interesting things that have happened.
Apparently something to talk about.
And I really think it would be beneficial if we had staff look at drafting a transition plan to bring PCDC in as a department of the city. I think much like you see ATC EMS as a department of the city of Austin, I think that there can be some qualitative gains and a lot increase in communication perhaps if this, the PCDC were an internal sort of organization rather than an external one.
So this is similar to what the discussion we had the last time regarding this, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. McDonald? Where the PCDC would become part, or would be part of the city as a department, they would still maintain a executive director and a board functioning within that particular infrastructure, yet directly where the executive director would then report to or have a kind of a dotted line to the city manager. Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir. And again, I think in terms of the speed at which we're seeing deals develop within the city, a lot of times those decisions are delayed or conflated. And so we're looking at an issue with an entity now where apparently there was a miscommunication on road credits or bill credits or whatnot that I think that confusion would not have been communicated had that department been inside and been in contact with the other directors that would then be all talking together in their weekly meetings or whatever in terms of dealing with these things. I think that by having the department internal, communication is more frequent and more forthcoming, and that our ability to action, take action on these deals becomes more focused and more streamlined.
And you guys are in the committee, and, you know, I haven't been there in years, right? So maybe this is an organizational question more from Serena than anything else. So when things like that, what Councilmember McDonald brought up, where there's either a lack of meaning in the minds or misconstruing specific contract terms, how much are you working in day-to-day operations with PCDC right now? Like, I mean, do we have staff that talks to them daily, three times a week, five times a week? I mean, or is it on a need-to basis? Because when things like that happen, I think to myself, well, couldn't someone just have had a conversation about this and just kind of resolve this? I mean, Jim, I mean, I don't think Jim's outrageous in saying, hey, listen, maybe this is a department, then it would have been reported some certain way. But I also think at the same time, kind of seems like if it's a contract term, how does that happen? Look at you smiling, chattering at your cat as I ask that question.
Yes, we have meetings regularly, regularly scheduled. I would say staff is in communication. It just...the topics that I believe I know Jim to speak of, we don't know. So it depends which topic. Would you have better communication? Sure, sure. Is it doable in the way that it is now? Yes. So I apologize for answering both. Both can work, and I've said it publicly before, when the right people are on the bus. And when those lines are well open, we don't...a recent issue came to us after it went to the board that we didn't know about. So that happens. Not casting blame, not fault, it just, we didn't know.
Yeah, but that we didn't know also results in a financial negative or positive, depending on the stakeholders in that situation, be it the city of Flugerville or the property owner, whoever it was.
So it's not only...
It's a financial issue as well, not just a communication issue.
That's what...okay. Caesar, you're on here too. What did you mean? Is that what you said too?
What? No, I'm trying to...
Trying to get over the...
No, I agree with Councilman McDonald. I mean, this would streamline things and allow a more efficient flow of information and discussion to ensue and ensure that the right hand knows exactly what the left hand is doing and vice versa, and it's making it very copacetic.
So what I'm hearing is not only a communication issue, but also some concerns regarding some financial ramifications and things.
So I'm going to say, and I've been around the block a time too with PCDC. I was there for a while. I know Mr. Rogers, you were there before I was, but I got a heck of a lot of tenure over there. The PCDC was originally underneath the umbrella of city administration, and it was spun out specifically for the same things that you call out, to be more nimble, to provide a quicker response and a more directed, more dedicated avenue of communication. So to say going the other way provides that, I think it's not necessarily accurate. I would also say in the event of the specific issue that you're bringing up, I do not believe there was a lack of communication. I believe that maybe someone didn't hear what was said, but there was no lack of communication from the city, from the PCDC in that scenario. So to try to use that as a reason to put the two together, I don't think you're solving any problems by doing that.
I'm sorry.
No, that's good.
I was just going to add to it, since you've been gone, you know, things have changed and all that. One thing that has...
So what you're saying is I need to come back?
Yeah, you do. You need to take my spot.
I mean, and let me say that because...
Six months ago, right? Things have changed since then.
Obviously. Well, Mr. McDonald was referring, and I think Mr. Mater as well, referring to the idea that, and maybe it was just you, Mr. McDonald, I apologize if I put any words in your mouth, but to the idea that we could make decisions more quickly if this was all a single department. I think what you're actually...the only way to actually effectuate that would be to replace the board with a majority of council members. Because there is not a way to make actions more quickly with...for us to make decisions more quickly with having the executive director report into the city administration. That's additional bureaucracy, not less bureaucracy. That's...it still has to go through process, and city administration doesn't make that go any more quickly. So I don't really understand how we could argue that it would allow us to make decisions more quickly by being a department rather than as a component unit. And I'm sorry, Mr. Reese.
I was just going to add that, you know, when we talk about working together copacetically, I think that...I hope that you would agree that our staff should be a part of these discussions, correct?
Our staff?
Our staff. The city staff should be a part of discussions with the PCDC board.
Absolutely.
PCDC staff.
We have a support agreement.
When I see our senior assistant city manager purposely excluded from conversations, that brings me pause and worry.
I'm not aware of any scenario where that's happened.
I am very aware of that.
And then we should bring that to bear.
So, yeah, I think...
I think you're telling stories that we can't validate.
So what I was going to say is that Serena said it can be done both ways. I also see a concern regarding the need to do it financially and from a communication standpoint, why you'd want it done a certain way. I also hear the fact that, you know, if this is a personnel issue or a personality issue, I don't know. All I know is that I grew tired of hearing about these things over and over again, and that's a very frustrating part, because I do think you have quality people all involved with it, but how do you...how do we make sure that meshing works? And just like you said, I don't even know, to your respect, I don't even know about replacing the council, because it's with council, which is like, well, no, because it sounds like it's more about what's going on regarding day-to-day, how to talk, specific issues that come up. That's what I'm hearing. I'm not hearing an overall direction standpoint. It's more about who's on first when it comes to certain things. And that's a frustrating thing for me to hear about. You go ahead. Put your glasses down.
I mean, it's your decision, bosses. And I mean, I respect both, that you know that. I hope you know this isn't a push for it. I think under the current structure, I'm not confident a new economic development director could be successful.
That's kind of a big thing to say.
And that's with a lot of thought.
And so Doug, to your point, in terms of scheduling items, you know, council meets the second Tuesday and PCDC meets the third Wednesday, which sometimes are two days in a row, but no less, no more than a week apart. And so it's not so much scheduling for those bodies to review things, although I think I have the order of that backwards. But anyway, the issue more is in terms of, you know, and I dare for another metaphor, but if I'm working with two different software companies on the same project, right, there's communication between them, but there's...it's not as fluid as if you're working two departments within the same organization. And so if we have an economic development arm of the city that's working in conjunction with CIP, planning and zoning, streets, utilities, and they're working together as opposed to an outside entity having to make requests, then I think there is streamlined processes there to deliver projects to the two governing boards more quickly and more completely.
Does the current administrative services agreement preclude the group from working with those very teams? I believe we provide the administrative support for those. I will tell you, my team, or the PCDC, we actually had a inner-staff at PCDC, the planner specifically to coordinate CIP projects, to coordinate zoning and comp plan and water, wastewater utilities. And that was, I believe, considered when the original administrative agreement was put in place, because PCDC didn't need to be paying a planner when we had plenty of planners over the city who could do that same work. So I believe our current administrative agreement contemplates that already, and if we're not utilizing it, we need to be.
When you say we, I think that if that's true, certainly, but I think there was a underutilization of that resource, if that happened to be the case, and whether the executive director realized that that was available to her or not, to figure out what potential issues were with the particular development that realized a huge impact fee bill. So apparently something went wrong there.
Yeah. And I don't know if it's...
Mr. Mayor, I noticed that there are a couple of the other PCDC board members in the audience. Would it be appropriate to ask them to... I'm not sure that it would, but... ...discuss their commentary on this? If they want to make public comment, that would be fine. I don't know that they're prepared to do that, but if you are, that's fine. We can get into a nice debate.
So Jim, your proposal is for that, to make that direction, period, or to start the planning around what that would look like?
I would like for us to direct staff to come back in either two weeks or four weeks, whatever they deem appropriate, with what a plan, a transition strategy would look like if...
Call and close.
No, no, hold on. If PCDC were a city department as opposed to...
So let's also be clear, the PCDC cannot be a city department under state law. Charlie?
Yeah, that's accurate. I think it's a matter of semantics.
Yeah.
Just to be clear.
Wait, 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 let Charlie...
No, I mean, technically, Councilmember Weiss is absolutely correct. PCDC cannot be a department. It is a separate nonprofit corporation. But there are structures that other cities use. Again, as I've said, there are a wide variety of ways that folks can do it, and it's a pure policy decision. But there are structures where the city staff is the main staff for the PCDC, and the PCDC pays their salary or part of their salary associated with that. So while they're not technically a department, to Mr. Weiss's accurate point, there's some shared resources there that can make communication sometimes easier, sometimes not, depending on your perspective.
So what we call that is legal fiction?
Sure.
It's not, hey, it's technically not, but yeah, you're staffing it in.
To Doug's point, I would like staff to evaluate what the appropriate structure would be to bring that... And Mr. McDonald, I think that would be fine, but I think we need to understand that we're already in the throes of a recruitment process for executive director, and James, or whoever, can you tell us where we are on that? Recruitment of the executive director? I know we put together a brochure, we posted it, and the question for me would be if we are evaluating, we certainly don't want an executive director to come in under one regime and then may transfer to another regime without them knowing that beforehand.
Yeah, and I'm in contact with Scott with Afion. I mean, this is a delicate thing that we're going to have to navigate. Certainly, I think it's an excellent point, like that it's going to have to be full disclosure to the potential candidates, that it could be one way or the other. So we're just going to have to navigate that as best we can.
And James, my understanding is applications are open through June 6th.
Currently, they're open through the 6th.
be to bring that over.
And, and Mr. McDonald, I think that would be fine, but I think, uh, we need to understand that we're already in the throes of a recruitment process for executive director and, uh, James can, or whoever, can you tell us where we are on that? Recruitment of the executive director. I know we put together a brochure, we posted it, um, and the question for me would be if, if we are evaluating, we certainly don't want an executive director to come in under one regime and then may transfer to another regime without them knowing that beforehand.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm in contact with Scott, with Affion. I mean, we, this is a delicate thing that we're gonna have to navigate. Certainly, I think it's an excellent point, like that it's gonna have to be full disclosure to this, to the potential candidates, that it could be one way or the other. So we're, we're just gonna have to navigate that as best we can.
And James, my understanding is, uh, applications are open through June 6th.
Currently are open to the 6th. I would suggest that if something changes within that time period, I don't know that we're gonna be able to put something together in that, in that short of a time period, probably not. Uh, but if we were to, if we had some sort of definitive direction before then, I would...
Yeah, we're not getting definitive direction. We don't have another meeting before then.
So...
Uh, I know I've already been in, in contact with at least two people who have applied for that position, so...
Yeah.
I know there are already people who are excited about it and, uh, eager to, uh, to do the work.
Yeah. So this pointed that the plan is for it to close June 6th.
Yeah, I was about to say, we've definitely got, I mean, the, yeah, we've got, a lot of people are interested in it. And, and correct, say that again, because the mayor asked a really good point out, I like what Victor made you for saying that. So right now in that, in the current post, it reflects the structure now?
It does. It says it reports to a board. And some candidates, mayor may not be okay with switching and going the other way. Like you may have candidates that have applied for it one way, but they'd say, you know what, it doesn't matter to me if it reports, I don't know. We'll, we'll have to kind of feel our way through that.
That's a very, you know, pertinent question, very pertinent question. So what do y'all, y'all, what do y'all think?
We need to put a screen on that now.
I move to table, uh, seven D.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table seven B.
All right. Let me say that out loud. I was asking how, when we say table it, how long is that?
Forever.
Yeah. Table is a, table kills it. Table kills it.
Table kills it.
So...
Pretty much kills the discussion.
There's no pretty much.
We should've did that on the other one.
I have a motion and a second, folks.
It's all right. It's about to be brought back. Who does it, who's my own?
Oops. Motion failed. Sorry, Mr. Rogers.
No, you're not sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Weiss.
Going back, going back to the, to the question, you said the structure, are you, that's a very good point, that, hey, this is what's been proposed in the, in the, in the posting. Do you still feel this? I know part of the discussion was, we wanted the new executive director to have, um, a voice.
About what you're walking into.
Well, we did say that, but we also said that we want he or she to be able to shape it too, right?
All right. If, if, if the new director comes in and says, oh, no, it needs to be structured differently, I would certainly listen to them.
I, I, I think that's what we said last time.
And, and yeah, we, we had this discussion last time. I am curious, who sets the PCDC agenda? Is it the executive director or is it the president?
I think, believe it's the president.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Oh.
But I'm, I would hazard to guess that the president sets it based on the recommendation of the executive director.
I'm, I'm sure there's quite a bit of staff involvement, same as our agendas.
True.
Okay. Any other discussion on this?
So, oh, wait, we don't have a first or second on this. Would you, what about, as you said, create the structure? I get, I guess you're, you're saying about the dates or about the cert, certainty, but what about coming back with a plan and then we look at that? Because my only concern is that, like I said, the posting is what the posting is right now.
Can't change it. Um, but yeah, I, I mean...
Because I'm well aware of it and then maybe someone, maybe staff needs to have the conversation with Doug afterwards, but like, I'm well aware of what you're talking about. Like that's, that's, that's an issue.
The more we should go post, the harder it is to recruit some.
So...
So, it must work for dysfunction.
We'll, we'll, we'll see where we end up then. I'll make, I'll make the motion that we direct staff to bring back in two weeks or the next meeting. And if I've messed up on the wording, let me know. Um, a, a, a structure to PCDC where the executive director would report to an ACM or the city manager to, to basically report, uh, in-house.
Okay, second.
A motion and a second. Does everybody understand the motion?
Yeah, may I have some discussion though?
Can I ask for clarity, a question too?
Okay. Um, no, I just, I, I think it's only inappropriate for us to delegate to staff our relationship with our component unit. Um, if, if we want to change it, it's our job to make that decision, not something that we should be delegating to staff.
So this is where I, I completely disagree with you. They're, they're literally, that's their job. Their job is to go ahead and see how these governmental structures look at. Our job is to go ahead and correct us on that and how that would work. I, I...
I see it as a policy decision, not a, not an implementation.
I, but what I'm hearing though is not a policy issue. What I'm hearing though is that...
Very much is a policy issue.
No, no. What I'm hearing though is that the issue isn't a policy issue, it's in the fact of day-to-day operations issue. So that's where, okay, when you look at it as a policy standpoint, that's fair. I look at it as day-to-day operations.
I, I hear, I hear, um, rumors and innuendo of day-to-day operations issue.
Don't cast aspersions to people if they're coming in, you know, they're not...
The aspersions are cast when, when you make those assumptions, when you make those statements that there are personality issues, that there are personnel issues, that there are operations issues, unless those are, are documented, I, I haven't, I haven't seen them, they weren't in any support material.
What I would, what I would say though is that I have never seen it. We, we disagree all the time on here, but I've never seen anyone come out of it out of, um, bad faith. So if they're saying this is what they're seeing and this is an issue, I mean, I, I take that as word and I'm saying right now what I'm looking at is, hey, let's look at the structure. That's what I'm saying. I get what you're...
And why would we change structure for, why, why would we change structure and, and our bureaucratic processes for temporary operational issues?
That's for question.
That itself's for question.
What's your clarification?
If I'm bringing back a plan on June 11th, I would suggest extending the recruitment date past June 11th.
I, I think...
Just think, maybe a few days, but not, just something to, maybe June 6th shouldn't be the cutoff date. I, I could ask Scott their, their opinion, but I'm just thinking if someone, if you're going to make some sort of change on June 11th, right?
I, I, I think that's...
I mean, it's a matter of a week.
I, yeah, I think it's fair to extend the recruitment deadline by...
Just a thought.
By a week as, as a corollary to that.
I, I think that's a good idea.
Is, is that even something that this body established?
You, you hired the director, so I think that you can set it...
Did we establish the date in resolution or is that something that can be handled administratively?
No, we did. Just as long as y'all are okay knowing that I told you one thing and would change it.
If we're changing the ground rules, I think we, we need to open up the, the, uh, the application period for at least a month after we change the ground rules. Because it may be that everybody that's applied up to that point won't want to be here under the ground, under the new ground rules. Or, right, we won't know and that's, and, and there might be some people, a lot of people, maybe nobody, but a lot of people who are like, hey, I wasn't gonna do it under the old ground rules, but I'm jumping on it under the new ground rules. Oh, we only had a three-day extension that's already expired by the time you heard about it.
Yeah, but you also have the...
At least a month.
James, what's the current window, the application window? When, when did we open applications?
I'm sorry?
Goodbye.
Thirty days?
And, and I think, I think one of the things that also greatly frustrated me about this, this process, so I, I was checking in on, uh, you know, the recruiting firm and I saw the job posted on, uh, the International City Managers Association site, but not on the International Economic Development or the Texas Economic Development site.
I'd like to clarify.
I know it's posted now.
They had put, the, the company made a mistake, not the, um, not the recruiter. They paid to get it reported. It's on there.
We've already had an awful lot of visibility from one particular audience and, and not necessarily from the other.
I, I completely agree with you on that. And I think that, I think that, I think that's a very legitimate concern and I think that,
So do we just need to repost it?
No, no, no. No, it's posted.
I think a thirty, I, I, I think we agree a thirty-day extension.
So instead of a June 6th cutoff of July 6th.
Well, thirty days from now would be fine.
Or thirty days...
Well, thirty days from...
Thirty days from whenever we adopt the change, if we adopt the change.
Right. Because June 11th will...
Oh, so you're saying we need to talk on June 11th and then...
If we approve it on June 11th and post it for, with a July 11th deadline.
Yeah. What, how does that affect y'all's timeline?
You just don't want to keep, you don't want to keep a job posting for, it's a long time, you know, three months. I mean, I'm just trying to...
Right.
You, you need someone in there doing that job.
Yeah, we have a...
Yeah, yeah, our, our, our risk is that no one's doing the job for three months.
We have a well-qualified interim.
I agree.
I would agree. So I'm sorry, we end up, I don't know, you were making a motion.
No, no, he, he got a second. He already got a second.
Oh, he got a second.
It was Jim and Rudy.
Okay. All right. Motion in a second. Can I, have the motion restated? Because I'm not sure I understand exactly what the motion is.
No, no.
No, it's just to...
Yeah, Jim, could you restate the motion for us?
Yeah. So, so I'm asking, I'm asking staff to evaluate a structure that conforms with all the legal necess, necessities of, of the executive director reporting to either the deputy city manager or the city manager.
Okay. You concur with that, Mr. There. Okay.
Ditto.
Motion in a second.
I heard you smile, Ken. We could hear you smiling.
Okay, motion carried.
All right. That's it?
All right.